What precipitated that?
YouTube now.
If it's steeper than thirty percent, it's not available anyways.
There's just so much to it. You really need to listen to and get up to speed on what is. We had a room full of people who we didn't even know were coming. Hi there.
Hello, how are you? Merry Christmas.
You too.
It's not quite. We've got about a minute.
Do you want to go ahead with the first part? I don't know. Yeah, a couple minutes.
Item number four. Here he is. He's coming in now.
Of course, he's going to be here. I was down here talking to him. I can name quite a bit today just because I wanted to understand more about that other situation.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to welcome you to this session of the regular session of the Linden City Planning Commission meeting. This is tenth day of November or December twenty twenty-four. We appreciate you all being here for this activity tonight. We'd like to commence our meeting with a invocation offered by Sharon Call. And then our pledge of allegiance by Mike Marchbanks.
Our Father in heaven, we bow our heads before thee this evening. We are very grateful to be here together together. We are grateful to have the opportunity to serve the city and to be able to have the freedom to discuss items that may benefit the city and may benefit the residents and those improving, hoping to improve the city and make investments in our city. We are grateful for this Christmas time. We are grateful for the goodwill that exists among people. We pray that we can have, be able to discuss things openly and be able to discuss things fairly this evening. And we pray for these things this evening and we say it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
For all rise.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. We'd like to have a roll call now of our commissioners. I'm Commissioner Rob Callis and I'll be conducting tonight on, and Commissioner Steve Johnson, he is absent. You doing okay?
He is. Yep. Says he's at home recovering well and surgery went well, so.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that. Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Scott Thompson.
Here.
Jared Showers is excused. Karen Danielson.
Here.
Sharon Call.
Here.
Ryan Dome.
Here.
And I think that got everybody. We'd like to welcome our city councilman, Lincoln Jacobs, being with us here tonight. Thank you, Lincoln. And we will first go into the approval of our last minutes, meetings minutes. We have been given a copy of those minutes in advance and given us time to review those and go through them. Are there anybody, any changes that anyone has noted that need to be made to the minutes? Look, okay. I need a motion then to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Oh, second it.
On the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We go to now a section of our meeting where we give the public an opportunity to comment on anything that they would like to just comment on, anything, this would be anything that's not on the agenda to be discussed tonight. Is there anything that any of our audience has for that? Yes.
We're on the agenda.
Yes.
You're right.
Mark, we'll have to have you come up here.
Just to make it really quick because I know those people pressed for time here. We have Joseph, who's one of our tenants.
Okay.
He has a time constraint to go somewhere. He just wanted to make a quick comment. I'm wondering if it.
Of something on the agenda?
Well, it's on the agenda.
But we're going to go, I think, right to that, right?
Oh, you are. Okay, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that would be great.
So it doesn't appear that there's anything that isn't on the agenda that we need to discuss and Mark will, we'll get to that. So we'll go to item number four then, and I believe this is the item that Mark you're referring to. This is a proposed amendment to the Orem West for Development Agreement. Our staff tonight is Michael Lawrence, and we'll turn the time to Michael to explain the motion here today.
Okay, thank you very much, commissioners. It's great to be here with you tonight. So back in February, the city council and planning commission approved a zone change for this project. It was originally zoned commercial general A eight, I think, and we rezoned it to mixed commercial. And then the council also adopted a development agreement or approved a development agreement to go along with this project. It was approved with specific design standards for the building and, and a site plan. I'll go through those in just a few minutes. And then that development agreement was signed in June of this year. Since that time, the develops, sorry, let me go back real, yeah, let me go back. These three bullet points, again, number one and two are regarding the materials and renderings and the site plan. And then number three, that a sufficient grease traps be installed to adequately support a potential restaurant use. Those were the three main points of the development agreement at that time. The applicant is approved for a fifty-eight thousand square foot building with four semi docks on the west side of the, of the project. And so the application that's been applied for tonight is to amend that development agreement. And I'm going to go through those items real quick. Say. So this is the building that was approved. It was put in as an exhibit to the development agreement. Very well-designed building, higher end exterior materials, like matching the office building across the street with those dark, the dark colors. You can see the, the bottom one here, and then the site plan. You can see the four truck docks on that west side of the building. The applicant's now proposing to amend this plan. This. I don't know why they come out in different sizes on the PDF, but. Actually, sorry, let me go back. Okay, so here's the updated rendering for the project. South elevation is very similar. There's a few changes to that and I'll show you those differences in a second. But the, this middle section is, you know, is wider.
Wider?
Wider, as in, yeah, that way. And then on this north side here, the applicant's proposing to include three truck docks. And so they would, from, on that west side, they would reduce the truck docks from four to three and then add three, three new ones to the north side of the building there. The, the, this elevation, this is the west elevation. Let's see. Yeah, that stays the same. The east elevation stays the same as you can, you can see here. It's only the elevation on the north side that's changing with the truck docks. And then there's some minor changes with, with this, with the new building. So what I did was, and then the site, let me go through the site. Originally where these three truck docks are, those were going to be parking. They've been able to move some landscape islands and still get the same number of parking stalls. And you'll see those in the, in the different renderings here. So. So what I did here was just compare the two buildings for you, so you can see both of them. Hopefully you can see that on your screen. So you can compare that front facade on, on each of the, the buildings. You can see the middle is wider, that entrance area, a couple of the pop outs have changed the colors. One thing to note that the overall height of the building increased slightly. And so though that, these, the parapet walls on these pop outs aren't as tall because the overall height of the building increased. And so they're, they're not quite as tall. Mark, when you could get a chance to come up, maybe you can speak to this. It's, it's hard to tell if these are canopies over those windows. Originally you had some larger canopies for signage in, on these pop outs here. I'm not really sure if there, there's what's over those windows on both sides there. I can't really tell from the renderings on that.
So thank you for the introduction, Mike, and the time this evening. I really appreciate it. Since the original design, a number of things happened. First, we found out with our great help of our mayor, that the sewer, that was such a problem. They were storing raw sewage and they didn't have the money to handle it. So we went back and we had some retail people that wanted to go in and they flat out the smell, the odor. Now, I got to Utah on Monday and the winds were coming from the north. The plane landed from the south. So, you know, the winds were coming from the north. We don't smell the sewer. It is still a tremendous challenge on the east side of the highway. We're willing to go forward with the, the package, depending on how many clients go into the building. Because we could have four clients, we could have one client. So we'll have to give some kind of ornamental metal entry works for whatever doors they're going to go in. So just because this is what it states with the rendering from MHTN, a very old, hundred-year-old architectural firm in Salt Lake, doesn't mean that we're, we'll either meet or exceed it. So should we find, Mike, that we need to put some other ornamentation to designate another entry? We can. We wanted to cut the truck wells on the west side. And right now we have actually only four truck wells, two to, two to the west, two to the north, and then we have a ground level door. So depending on client need, they may say, hey, we don't want that ground level door. Just give us essentially one other truck well. Now, to the, to the north, you'll see we have a beautiful warehouse building that's looking south. We're still going to try to come up with a way to screen those trucks because I don't want those people to look at them. But they have to be on an angle. The way we manipulated the entry, okay, that allows, if you've ever driven a big truck, it allows for a great straight shot and backing right up. Now, the other thing that Mike was probably going to get to is, so what we'll attempt to do is put a lot of landscaping, bigger trees right there to block the trucks. The thing to keep in mind is we have the two office buildings to the north. Well, Crumble Cookie that's in there, that put an illegal kitchen in without approval and just did it. Cisco Foods has two tractor trailers every day coming in. There's not one truck facility for them. And they just come right in and dump wherever and throw their pallets wherever. They're not our tenant. Our tenant happens to be GoTo or LogMeIn. So at least this gives the option. I think originally we said, well, let's put all the trucks to the, to the west. But then if we have a commercial kitchen, how are they going to get, how are they going to get access? And this gives the opportunity to break that thing in half. But also what we're going to try to do, and I'm willing to even try to subsidize it. We, we have Joseph, who has a very nice business. He'll come up and tell you about it. We, and they have a little retail component. So we may have to subsidize, it's a sixty thousand foot building. We may have to only charge them for fifty thousand feet. They're one of our good tenants. I think the mayor and some other city council were at their event here most recently. Their business is doing real well. I'll let him tell you about that. But we really wanted retail, food, all different options. It just, we've, we've tried and will continue to try, but with how that west side has developed. And Mike has taken it on hi, his own with some people with very little help. My daughter Lauren is here. She'll tell you how many accidents a month are at Pleasant Grove Boulevard and that cross street of, what is that cross?
Twenty-eight hundred west.
And, and they were supposed to give us a light. We did our behalf. We paid for the expansion on the northeast and the southeast. The southeast, we didn't even have to. We still did it. And they promised to give us a light and of course, every excuse in the world. So that's limited our access into this. Anyway, I think this becomes a great option. I don't know. Are there any other questions, Mike? I know you're, we're pressed for time this evening.
Let me quickly ask two questions while Mark's here. One, what was the comment about the sewage being held? Explain that.
Yeah, one of the, and I'm not going to get the terminology right, but one of the digesters or tanks or whatever there, over there at the sewer plant. The Tempanogas had went down or something like that and they had to pull out all of the waste and they, they did have it sitting outside and did cause a lot of odors, so.
No, no, no. It's much worse than that. Okay? It's way worse than that. People honestly should go to jail. Okay, this is how bad it is. And every day I'd write, there's something shitty about this Utah city. And I'd harass the county commissioners. I'd harass anyone that would listen. Because they're taking raw sewage and they're stockpiling it because they don't have the capacity in that sewer plant. And they won't have it for four years. They are authorizing and trying to get a mandate of a one point two billion dollar program to go in and rebuild it. It's a four-year program. Meanwhile, our properties and our sixty tenants, one of them right here, and many others have to put up with this. Now Carolyn, who's been a really great mayor. She went over there and said, hey, enough's enough. What's going on? And she got to the head of them. Now, all of a sudden, after she went and complained, magically, they've come up with extra money to address this, to transport the physical feces that are dried and in the open to landfills. But make no mistake, this is a huge problem. I think we had talked about it. You were here and it's a horrible problem. And they need to do something about it.
They mean, is that this Pleasantville Dry City?
Well, it's, it's the Tempanogas Sewer District, but they are, they are owned by what, seven or eight jurisdictions? And they have their own board and they are doing something, but they should have done something about this a decade ago. It's kind of late now. So for us to then have to say, oh, let's put some beautiful restaurants here. I'm like, great, we can advertise, you know, sewer hot dogs, sewer hamburgers. You know, it's kind of hard to get people, but look, we're four years out. I'm telling you this because everyone should push on that issue along with the thirty percent property tax increases that this county wants over and above what we just. So we pay two million a year, property taxes, all right? And we had to pay an extra two hundred thousand this year. And none of our properties went up in value, you see, but everyone tweaks their little millage. So where do we think that money's coming from? You can ask Joseph if he has an extra twenty-five grand next year to pay in property tax. It's a problem. And if it keeps going like this, we will be California. And we got paid and spent hundreds of millions, almost three hundred million of our own money to develop here. And we brought all these companies here. The good thing, the good thing is we know them. Now we'll get paid six hundred million to move them to another state. That's affordable.
You on your building. You don't have a tenant in it yet.
No, we don't, but, but, but.
But why are you, just give me your explanation for putting the more bays, truck bays on it.
Well, so if you divide it in half, thirty thousand feet could have their three trucks. Thirty thousand feet could have their three trucks. Or you could divide it in three and do something very unique.
And is your truck pattern from the west and all the way around the building?
No, the truck pattern more than likely comes off of Pleasant Grove Boulevard down the hill. They'll make the right turn to the north and they'll go approximately two hundred yards, make a left and have a straight entry. And then they can back directly in, which is kind of over their right, their right shoulder, which is perfect. And then they'll do the same thing to keep going around to the west and make a turn to the south. And then they can back in. So if we had food, you have to have a way to get the trucks in there. So this gives us some flexibility. It gives us opportunity. It, it makes for a better building. It allows you to divide it up. If we're arrogant and said, oh, no, we'll just have one sixty thousand foot tenant. But these buildings are built for fifty years. We, we, we need to accommodate the changes of what can happen. And that's why.
Now, back to Mike. Sorry, I just.
Just want, I just, you know, just as we go through these. So, you know, these, this top rendering is what would be the new exhibit in the development agreement. And then this top rendering for the site plan would be the, the new site plan rendering. So we need to make sure that, you know, this meets, you know, the intent and it's similar to what was approved last time. Because these will be new exhibits in that development agreement. What, and so.
Back to that first picture.
I can explain what we did there too. You see the top one is a little more contemporary with a, a more consistent sight line. And it doesn't pop up, which is kind of a little outdated design. So what we wanted to do is give it more balance to the top. And we raised it up slightly, which also gives for some added value features. And I, I want to say the glass should be very similar. It's all going to be bronze on both sides, insulated glass. We're specking guardian glass, similar glass to, that we have in the office building right across the way to the south for the Global Payments Building and that Go Health Building that we built, both of those. All the extrusions will be black and modern powder coated. We've specked a duranatic paint on those, so it's upgraded. And then we have EPHIS, not my favorite, because EPHIS doesn't wear well and you can't paint it. But we have EPHIS, we have EPHIS there. And on the inside, it's all insulated with our insulated foam panels. So any other questions I might be able to answer?
Why did you, why did you feel like you needed to change that architecture from what it was originally approved?
So when we started to cost out and buy out each particular type of asset, whether it be glass, whether it be this, you know, the steel, the panels, it's far more efficient. And then MHTN, their team of architects said, you're making a mistake, whoever did this first rendering. You need to make it consistent. It's more modern. It's going to last the test of time. It will look better. So the committee of.
So the second picture is the one you're wanting now?
The one, the one that's on the top.
The top one.
The one that's on the top. You see how the lines, the lines are better. It gives better shadow lines and it doesn't give like an outdated step up. So that's why we did it that way. And now.
The second one is the one that we originally approved, right?
The one you originally approved, I want to say is the one on the bottom.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Which raises it up and makes it a little better. And they're essentially really the same in terms of the building. They just look from what the team of architects and why we like it, MHTN, there's seventy architects on staff. Most architectural firms might have one or two architects. Everyone's an architect there. They vetted it out through their team and the bulk of the architects said, hey, we like this one better. So we use our professionals that team up with us and we listen to them. So for that reason, that's why, that, that's why we are here today.
Okay. Fine.
Thanks, Scott.
So to confirm, we still even, it doesn't sound like you're planning on a restaurant immediately in the future, but yet the building is still being plumbed for the ability.
Well, if Joseph ends up moving in, he'll talk to you about some of these special events that they do. And they may have a restaurant in there. They, we're still going to do, we're not going to do a commit, a, a commercial kitchen blank spec build out because it's so high-performance spec.
Right.
But what we will put in, is what Mike did address, is a, is a, you know, an oversized grease separator underground. So that's there. So we don't have to dig things up later. That will be there. And if we get somebody, whether it's Joseph or somebody else, then obviously we're, we're ready for them. It's just, I, I, all the brokers, and we've been through so many of them, have not been able to find restaurant takers to go on that side.
So everything in the development agreement remains the same, the, the materials, the colors, the grease trap. The only thing that's changing is these two pages with, with the site plan and the, the building rendering, which would allow, the building rendering would allow the docks on the north side. The, the one thing, concern I have is, since this is being adopted, when I get building plans in, I, I have to make sure it matches this. And, you know, and so the, these spaces here where originally they had awnings over the top of each bay, you know, I'm not sure what's in here. And so I'd like some more specificity on that. And maybe if I need to write that in the, as a recommendation to the council so that that's in the development agreement, maybe we have that discussion more on, and then we, you know, can have the council address that.
I like the concept that if the tenants go in there, they split and they need those canopies. And that, I mean, it seems like we could write that in.
Yeah, and right now we have three, Mike. I want to say there's one on each hand and they kind of wrap around. So we want to make the end to the east that faces those office buildings look like a front. And there will be an entry to the east as well.
But even with, even if you don't get tenants in either one of these, they're not entries. I feel like you're still missing something, whether it's canopies over the windows or.
Well, sunshade or some kind of ornament, ornamentation could be added to balance the.
That's been done on his other buildings.
Like we do in all of our buildings.
So you, if I hear you're right, you're not, you don't have a problem with putting some iron.
No, we want to be smart about it and the right product and the right mix and have it there. And then like, so when we start to develop building plans, we have a number of people that are interested in the building. We'll see what their specific needs are. But even if it's a false entry, we can still have a knockout panel and have a, you know, something above it that balances the look of it. So this is not as big as our other buildings. This is only a sixty thousand foot building. So anyway, we're excited about the project. It's more expensive than building a tilt wall building to build this building like this. And it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a great building. Right now we're helping out our neighbor at Ken Garve that has put like.
So many trucks out there.
So many trucks there. And we've said to the city of Linden now, if somebody, if you guys need trucks or whatever, we've gotten many tenants' cars at discounts. He's been very accommodating. We accommodated them, the neighbor in need. So any event, that's still out there.
Okay. Why don't we hear from this gentleman as part of the applicants?
Yeah, especially if he's on a timeline.
Yeah, very good. Thank you for coming, Joseph.
So my name is Joseph Ogden and I am the CEO of Americana Art Enterprises, which our flagship brand is Boardwalk Puzzles. We also own the Dowdell brand, Story Guild, and another brand called Speedmaster for speed puzzling. So it's nice to be back. So it's nice to be back in Linden. I lived in Linden for 15 years when I was a professor at the Marriott School of Management. And now I'm running this company. We're currently located just south of Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the building behind the, the big office building. So, uh, we're growing. We sell our puzzles all over the world. It's kind of funny when I tell people we make puzzles in Utah and sell them in China, which we do. We also sell a lot of puzzles to Costco. You may have seen our brand in Costco this year. Uh, and we're growing. We have a lot of activities at our current building. Many of you probably didn't know anything about pickleball five years ago, but maybe you play pickleball now. Well, it's kind of the same thing with speed puzzling. Speed puzzling in the last five years has become a sport and a huge activity. In fact, we sponsored an event in Ohio in June that ESPN Sports filmed, which was their first speed puzzling competition. We held the Utah speed puzzling competition at our facility in September. We also sponsor the California State Speed Puzzling Competition, Texas, Minneapolis, and Minnesota. So we're leaning into that space and that brings in a lot of people. Uh, for example, in September, we had over 600 participants come in on the Saturday of that event. We typically hold one or two events a month at our facility. And in addition to that, we have a storefront, which we really hadn't planned on when we moved over there because we manufacture there. We make it right here in Linden. All the, all the puzzles sold in Costco are made in Linden, whether they're sold in the UK, in China, in Norway, Sweden, Iceland, and California. All made in Utah. And so we're growing and we've been talking with Mark for several months about how to expand. And this could be a very good option for us because we would have a better storefront. We'd have better visibility from the street. Uh, we could plan our building improvement a little bit more efficiently than we currently have by starting it at the beginning. And, uh, we think that we would need at least four truck bays and one ramp because we have two receiving and two outgoing. And we'd need one level ramp to load. So this setup works actually particularly well for us. Another thing we really like about this setup is that it's a south facing entrance. Currently, we have a north facing entrance. Many of our customers are older. We don't want them slipping and falling. Even the last couple of weeks, uh, the ground has been slippery. No snow, but slippery because you get that micro frost layer. And we worry about that. We put salt out all the time, but we're also don't want to be liable if someone falls and we don't want them to fall anyway. So, uh, we want to look at possibly having a south facing entrance for the storefront and maybe even an east facing entrance for our big activities. In this building, there's quite a bit of parking on the east side. And also just across the median in the next building parking lot, there's a lot of overflow that wouldn't be used particularly for the Saturday type events that we, we often have or the evening events. Our big events are not during the day. We're manufacturing during the day. Sometimes we're manufacturing all through the night. But, uh, our big events are typically in the evenings and on weekends. So we've been talking with Mark about this space. We also like the slightly higher, uh, inside because we have to double stack our top, you know, rack. And usually that's empty boxes and things, but we need that extra storage space. So, uh, I also, while I'm here, would like to just echo Mark's comments about the sewage treatment plant. When we moved in four years ago, we didn't really notice it that much. On, on a bad day with the wind blowing the wrong direction and it being really warm, it was noticeable. Now it's noticeable every day in the summer and many days even in the winter. And, uh, I think it also brings extra bugs and things like that into the area that are just not healthy. And we don't want to expose our employees and our team to that or the guests that come into our facility. So any pressure you can put on to the treatment facility group, TSD, I think it's called? I talked to the mayor, our team talked to the mayor about it when she was in our facility a few weeks ago. But I can't speak strongly about the need to fix that situation. It is a health hazard and it is very unpleasant. Even for people coming to buy a puzzle, not eating a sandwich or anything, it's still very unpleasant. So.
Even when it used to be that my kids would run inside, because we live down close, they'd come running inside, they couldn't play out there when it was bad. So I, I get it, but I, we haven't smelled it where we were, we are as much. But it sounds like it's still so bad where you guys are. That's rough.
Well, it's literally a few blocks from our current building. It, it would be two more blocks from this building, but that's not enough. You can smell it all the way up into, you know, different parts of Linden, up by the junior high. I lived on Canal Drive. You could smell it up there occasionally.
And just a reminder, we, we don't, we don't participate in that sewer plant and.
I know it's not yours, but it's, it's your neighbor.
Yes, so there's only so much we can do. The mayor does a great job.
Yeah, something's moving.
We're fingering our fingers and we're hoping it's sooner rather than later. But as a neighbor and, you know, you guys can maybe exercise some influence.
Pressure is being put on at this point.
We're doing what we can in a civil way with the group.
We'll encourage that.
Yes. Do you have any other questions for me about our company or about the building?
Terrific things. It's really interesting what you're doing.
Puzzles as well?
We, we own the Dowdell brand. We have licensed that brand to Buffalo Games in New York. We still make limited edition Dowdell puzzles at our facility. So we make some, but not as many as we used to. Our flagship brand is now Boardwalk. It's a, the Dowdell brand is, is folk art and it's sort of run its course somewhat, you know, in the marketplace. And so the artists that are in our art studio paint for Disney and other, you know, entities like that that we participate in. So we have a Disney line. We have our Boardwalk line. They also painted many of the Dowdell puzzles. Part of the team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. That's just really interesting what you're doing there.
Come see us anytime.
Michael, any other information you need to give? Are we ready to?
So you would be making a recommendation to amend the development agreement to the city council?
I'd like to just address what Michael has mentioned about you, you felt like something needed to be added to that. You know, if you look at it, you, like, uh, Mark said, there's the big awning in the middle and the ones on either ends. And if there was awnings added to the two darker pop outs, seems like it would be a little more balanced. Is that what you're thinking, something like that?
Yes, or can, or like in, let me go to, if I can go to Google Maps really quick. You know, like this existing building, it's, it's got can, you know, little canopies over the windows. For not every one of them, but, you know, most of them.
It's kind of a, uh, I being.
Yeah, it's more of a pedestrian feel and so.
Are you okay with that, Mark?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, when we lay it out, it will look great. And when we buy the awnings, maybe we put some, some shades, uh, over those inactive entries.
Well, it's kind of popular to have these, uh, iron ones that come straight out from the building. And whether they're decorative or whether they're over an entrance.
This is not a tilt wall building.
I know that.
So it's a tilt wall. We could just go in, plug and play. We have to be a little more aware of that on this particular type of metal building. However, it doesn't mean it can't be supported from the ground up and come up and do something unique. Now, we added some of that to our, actually our Linden.
You want to come up?
Our Linden three phase five, okay, where we have shuff steel, right?
And when we rebuild this, um, office building, because that lease is almost up, we'll be taking some of that kind of steel art for each entry and modernizing and repainting that building. And I was telling Mike earlier, we're even working with a world-class defense manufacturer that wants us to take that building, that office building and add to it for their, their manufacturing. And that would bring a lot of jobs here. So we'll, we'll, uh, like whatever Mike writes up, we'll, we'll come up with something with the architects and we'll make it great.
Thank you. And probably, thank you very much, Mark. I think what we need to do then is, is there any discussion with?
Just one, one comment. When I zoom in on those real close, it looks like there's awnings on those windows already, on the lower ones. I'm not sure what.
And it does, I just, I'm not a hundred percent sure. You know, it, it does. If you, you know, you look at those, it, I just can't tell if, like, you look at this white behind, you know, around the building. I don't know what that is. So it's, it's kind of like, I don't know what's over these windows, but it does look like they are canopies. I just don't know for sure.
Okay. So we just need him in the motion to continue working with staff to ensure that the windows have appropriate canopies.
Yes. And appropriate canopies and balanced on the, on the building, yeah.
Well, I think we're open to a motion and we can put what Mark, what, uh, Mike has, Michael has suggested in there and let, let you work with, uh, staff on, on coming up with something. So do I hear anybody that wants to make a motion?
I can make a motion.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. The only, the only concern I would have would be by making additional, um, entrances for trucking, that kind of thing. I, you know, we've been really concerned about retaining some commercial use of this building. And by, by, you know, increasing the, the truck entrances and that kind of thing, I, I hope that doesn't decrease our chances of, of, of use of eventually having some commercial, commercial clients in that building. I mean, I know the, I know the, uh, sewer is a problem, but hopefully that isn't a problem forever. And so we, we do want to have those options.
Let me, let me address that.
You know, that commercial option.
If you look at all of these little retail food eateries in Pleasant Grove that are so hard to get to now, right?
How they are.
That they don't have the right parking or they don't have any flow for trucking. When they unload from Cisco and all their other vendors.
They're shutting down roads.
They just, it is so dangerous. They just unload anywhere. What we've done here is future proof this. So we have people that offer to buy our real estate portfolio monthly. Okay, at ungodly numbers, over half a billion. We're like, we're not sellers. Why? We've done things that, that our, that our competition hasn't, haven't even thought of. These doors in the back, if, make it so great and easy and safe. And the way Mike participated with MHTN and all of us, we said, hey, let's get the landscaping. Let's have a straight flow for a tractor trailer. There's no turn and he's got an easy backup. It's beautiful. Now, the only thing we need to do is really on that north view, Mike, we gotta put some kind of stem wall. So those warehouses from the north, they're looking and a little landscaping. So that kind of makes it a world-class look for them.
Yeah, and I, I think the way you have set it up, the, there's that additional, you know, entrance for trucking, it won't, you know, it won't be visible.
It won't, we're going to make it not visible. So we'll have to figure, figure that out.
Yeah, and, and that's the only concern is whether it, it decreases the, or increases the chance of, of that use to the point where the commercial use won't ever happen.
The commercial look, the commercial use will be pointing to the south.
Well, I, I know it will.
Pointing to the north.
But will the use of, you know, the trucking and those kind of things and that, it more industrial uses than that, will that increase to the point where the commercial use will never happen?
So the commercial use, the fallacy is that they don't need trucks. They all need trucks whether, no matter what they have, you have to have trucks. They gotta have truck access, whether it's food, supplies, whether it's, so this allows for that and you mask it. And that's what makes it great.
My experience has been that, uh, the demand for the retail, you know, you get a much better return on retail than you do the industrial. So if it comes, you'll make a way to make it happen.
Right, and that's, that's the thing is we want to make sure that that option is, is there.
You know what? I think it actually enhances that option. I really do. Just because it is such a problem with these retail strip areas where they're putting in a lot of restaurants. They have not planned for their shipments of food and it's, it's a pain.
It's true.
You know, and you take a building that big. I like the idea of eliminating one on the west end and then putting a couple over there. Cause the likelihood is you, somebody that, it, 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 there's going to be multiple users in this building and, and they can't cross through the building. They need, it, it's a, to me, it's a, it's a great idea.
It makes sense.
And I appreciate that insight. We, I just, I just don't want to, you know, take actions that would eliminate our, our chances to, of being, of having that commercial use. That, that's my, that wasn't my concern.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then I look for a motion on this amendment.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of resolution 2024 dash 35 dash R to amend the Orem West Four Development Agreement. Yeah, with the, uh, caveat that, uh, the staff will continue to work with, uh, Mr. Weldon and, and a few, uh, more enhancements as the building plan comes to together.
And this is a recommendation for city council?
If we can just be more specific with the canopies or.
The canopies on the, uh, on, on, on the building. And, and on the south side, it, to me, it looks like they're there, but I, we'll make sure that you do that. Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You're good to go.
So Mark, Mark will, will take this to city council next Monday, next evening, so.
Yeah, we're real tough.
You're still in town? If not, Lauren will handle it?
I won't be in town, but the, the big boss right here and her brother and the rest of our team that we've expanded will all be here. So it's their future, they'll be here. I'm trying to quit. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Yep, and this man has gone out of his way to fight for that light for us. I think you ought to give a raise.
I wish I could.
Yeah, yeah.
Fighting for that light because we've had two of our staff members getting an accident. And that is a dangerous section with those buses and Lincoln coming down from there. It's really dangerous.
Well, Lincoln knows how much authority we have to give him a raise, so.
If we could just buy up the rest of the properties in Linden, and I owned it all, I would give it to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess our next item is just a staff report? Or do we have another item?
I, I don't have any other items. Um, I think you're probably aware, we had a big city council meeting last week regarding the 1200 East Road connection. Uh, the, um.
Real quick summary, can you give us the gist of that?
You know, I think there was a, there was a lot of comments against the road. I think there was also a number of people there that didn't speak up because there were some in favor of the road. And so, uh, the, uh, one resident, David Gardner, has applied to amend the general plan to remove that road off the map. Um, so in January, expect to start having some meetings, uh, on that. Well, I don't know yet if we'll start with a joint meeting or if it'll, with the council or if it'll just be, uh, um, come straight to the planning commission. I don't, I don't know that yet, but, um, it'll be a topic of a lot of discussion the first of next year.
Are there other things that we need to look at at the same time on the general plan? Or would that be the only thing?
I think that'll be the only thing.
All right. All right. Is there anything from our staff or commission?
And I was talking with these guys all earlier today because I wanted to make sure I understood some things on it. And I, I expressed that I, I think it would be, uh, very valuable to have a joint meeting with the, the council. And I, I expressed that I, I think it would be, uh, very valuable to have a joint meeting with the, the council.
On that topic?
Yeah, on that topic, and, and at that time, maybe provide some educational and information.
Did we find out if Pleasant Grove has taken it off their?
They have not. It is on their map.
Oh, it is, I'm interested.
Yes.
There were several things that weren't, um, weren't quite accurate, but the, uh, the information that was given, and so.
It's really, it's really hard, like, that whole neighborhood seems to be looking, they're looking right now. They're looking very myopic. They're not looking into the future.
Exactly.
And, and, you know, we're, we're very much, that's our planning. That's what we are. So we have to be careful not to give away just because a few people scream and yell.
Well, we need to look. You know, there's issues with who owns the property.
Right, right.
Will we ever get ownership of the property?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of issues. Well, we can talk about that after the first year.
I just think there's a lot of things that, information that was given by them that wasn't accurate.
Right.
And, and a lot of historical information that would be important for this group to understand.
This is Pleasant Grove's general plan, street map, and it does show that.
On there.
Connecting road on their general plan map.
So. That's the yellow one there.
That's the yellow one. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that other section, the other yellow section.
It's only.
People are still fighting that as well.
Yes, yeah.
And, and they're fighting that based on, do they own all that land, and they're just saying, we know, we don't wanna sell it, or?
And then residents, it's more having a double frontage lot that they don't like that idea about, but, um.
Backyard is gonna be a road, and the front yard is the accessory road. They can have a fence all along the back, but there's a street back there, and they got the front street.
So.
One of the things I didn't understand completely when he was talking, uh, when David Gardner was talking, I asked you about it, was that, I, I kinda got the impression that their, their lots were cut short because of the easement that the city had, that ten-foot easement. But they have the, they have the full thirty-some foot setback.
Well, he showed the one plan that where the easement were right through the house, and that didn't make sense to me.
Now, what, I don't understand that. I think.
I don't either, but it, it showed.
Oh, I don't know.
No, the, um, but I always like to be careful on those, but.
Okay, we'll, we'll wait until then.
It would be, I just think it would be good to, the education and the information would be good cause, um, I was probably as familiar as anyone on the commission as far as that, that road that was planned. And yet there were a lot of things I didn't know and was kinda hit broadsided, and, and, um, that's why I came in, was because I, I felt like I needed to understand things more carefully. And it was very, um, good for me to listen to the city council's meeting on YouTube, even though I felt like residents, um, some were quite disrespectful. The, the emotions became more heated from our meeting.
I think it has a potential to make a very significant impact. I think it's upon all of us to make sure we study it personally, to understand the impact it has. It's not, look, you retire in the shower, and it's not just a road that's in the middle of a neighborhood.
That's right.
It has implications all the way down to that seven hundred block corridor. We all know what we're investing, potential benefit that has for our city.
That's right. There's a lot, lot of, a lot behind that, and, and just to take it off the master plan would, would have a, a huge impact.
Okay.
We really need to understand all the indications.
That information together, um, so we're ready next year to, to be able to present those, those items to you.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay, so this, we're not meeting again this month, correct?
This is our only meeting.
Oh, okay.
We have the Christmas party on the nineteenth though, right?
Lunch at noon, uh, I think it was noon, on the, on the nineteenth, so.
I'm kinda sad that we're having one that our spouses don't get to come to though. You know, that's, we kinda enjoy getting to do that.
Okay. And the Christmas light parade, the Linden Light Parade.
Is this Friday?
I'm already decorated. I'm ready to go.
Are you?
I am ready to go. Oh, yeah.
What are you doing?
Well, I've got my ATVs all lit up, and then I have a, I went out and welded up a, a support where.
Really?
Where Santa Claus and his reindeer are flying out over the top of the, of it, yeah, and leaving behind a big old sign of joy, you know? Yeah.
That's terrific.
Okay, we need to bring this meeting to a conclusion. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Hope you have a merry Christmas.
What's about your Santa, your?
It's just, it's just big inflatable that just sort of rides up, comes behind the sled up over the top of the.
Really?
Yeah.
Have you had it in?